Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. We can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Scott, can you call the roll?
Ms. Albright? Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Jay Murray? Mr. Strobel?
Present.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. B. Scott, yes. Mr. Jay Murray, yes.
Here.
And Ms. Olson?
Here. Procedures for public participation should be up there right now. They also should be in the back of the room. Any presentations by the public on agenda items tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to announcements. Agenda edits, do we have any agenda edits?
I'm going to add something new.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Under New Business, did I hear?
New Business, we're going to add Staffing, IT Staffing and Support.
Okay, so under New Business, we'll add number 7. Staffing for Technical Support. Okay? All right. Any other agenda edits for anybody?
New Business is number 8.
Is it number 8? It is. It is number 8, and it's still number 7. And Doug, let me just make an announcement, there will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel. I'm sorry, I'm not using the microphone, I usually don't need to. All right. So, let's move on to our Consent Agenda. We have items under the Consent Agenda, 1 through 13. Does anyone make a motion to approve those agenda items?
Is there a move?
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Strobel. Any discussion for these items that we discussed initially, I guess, 2 weeks ago? There are some numbers that are in there that weren't in there before. I didn't want to... Oh, never mind. Any discussion on any of those items?
I'm trying to catch up to you a little bit, so I follow that.
That's okay.
Because I can't see behind me.
No, it's okay. It's number 3, Consent Items. Numbers 1 through 13.
We do, on item number 6, we do have to do a special roll call vote because it's a BCIU maintenance service agreement.
I see. Can we amend the motion to include 1 through 13 excluding number 6? Mr. Miller, would you be okay with that?
Move to amend?
Second?
Second.
All right. So can we have a roll call vote unless somebody has...
Is BCIU?
Nope. Nope. Do we have any other?
Items, so 1 through 13.
Minus number 6.
Minus number 6. Okay. Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Jay Murray? I don't think I'm going to hear much of him. Okay, Mr. Strobel? Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leone?
Yes.
Ms. Olson? 6 yeses, 1 no, passes.
There's just one absent.
One absent. So just 6-0. One thing I will say before we get to number 6 is Mr. Miller and I received an email from Mr. Austin Peterson of the Maple Springs Swimming Association thanking us for at least considering having that exemption from property taxes, and I will let him know that that was approved. He did tell me that he had preliminary approval from, I guess it's Union Township, as well. So that will go a long way to help them stay viable, so... Do I have a motion for Consent Items, A6?
Number 6.
We still have to do number 6 because we broke that out from the consent vote. Do I have a vote for A6?
Why do we take it out?
It has to be voted for separately by...
Make a motion for A6.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion further? I believe that our agreement is the money's... Our budget stayed exactly the same as it did for the current year, for the following year.
Exact same expense.
Okay. If we have no other questions, we can do a roll call for that number, 6?
This is for the board vote. Bucky Scott, I'm saying yes. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Ms. Leone? Julia Olson? Okay, we have 6 yeses and 1 absent.
All right. And for, next thing on the list, Personnel Consent Items, number 4, we have A1 through 4.
Make a motion for A1 through 4.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Ms. Albright, any discussion? All right. We have another... We can do affirmative, like, we can do it as a group if you want.
I'll be honest with you, I'm still trying to get this page down.
No, it's fine. It's fine.
All right, so this is for Consent Items, I believe, 4.1 through 4.4. I wish I remembered Mike Wolf here at this exact moment. All right. Mr. Murray, we understand he's absent. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Scott, yes. Ms. Leone?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Albright?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes.
So again, 6 yeses, 1 absent. This is not good.
This whole group is laughing.
Right. We're laughing with you. So, we got, next item is number 5. 5.1 to 5.10, I guess?
Yes, question.
Okay, I believe we have to do a motion and a second, and then we can have discussion. Do I have a motion for number 5, inclusive? Okay, Mr. Strobel, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and discussion?
My question's about number 4 of the proactive maintenance service agreement for Clark. Does that, 4725, include any repairs, or is that for just inspection? Or is that like an insurance policy at all, or is that just an inspection every end? I remember we talked about this sort of financing for this statement.
And if Ms. Haynes doesn't have that answer, then Steve does.
The contract would be to evaluate the equipment and make monitor maintenance repairs for the equipment to bring it off the park, and to give us a gradation so that we can move forward with replacement of equipment and planning.
I remember we talked about it, I just didn't remember if we covered anything, so I'm
I have a question about that. So, I didn't hear all the details on the contract. Is there extra maintenance that they're doing because we haven't had a service contract for a long time? So if we decided to re-up the contract next year, would the number go down? Do you know what I'm asking, I guess?
I'm not sure if the number would go down.
Yeah.
But the equipment has been evaluated.
Right.
So the evaluation is necessary to look at how we're approaching...
Where we are.
Where we are.
All right.
A lot of this equipment is 20 years old.
That I do remember from the discussion before.
Replacement, too.
Yeah. Okay.
Basically, this is future planning.
All right. Anybody else have any questions they'd like answered on any of the other items, or on that one? Seeing none, I think we might be ready to vote.
Consent Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.10 will be considered unanimously approved unless otherwise indicated by a vote to the contrary.
Always consent.
Thank you. Hearing none, it's all approved.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Albright.
Okay, so we're moving on to number 6. Personnel Added Consent Items, 6.1 to 6.3. Do I have a motion?
There's 1 and 2, right?
Oh, haha, I can read. 1 and 2.
Mr. Miller, and then Mr. Strobel?
Okay, any discussion on those items? Any discussion? Okay. You want to call? Go ahead.
Of course, I'm sorry. This is...
Brian, should I? Consent Item 6.1, 6.3, you can do that, yes.
Consent Agenda Items 6.1 through 6.3 will be considered unanimously approved unless otherwise indicated by a vote to the contrary. Motion approved.
Okay, one of the items that we just voted on was the resignation of one of our Assistant Principals, Frank Flanagan, Frank Flanagan at the high school. I did want Mr. McKnight to say a few words about him, he's been with us about 4 years? 3 years?
Mr. Flanagan's been with us for 2 years.
2 years, okay.
2 years. And a bright young administrator, which is unfortunate to lose, but he's going on an opportunity in a bigger system, which is a little bit closer to his home. He will be missed, he did bring a lot to the high school. Frank's, I would say this, that down the road, if there's a couple of time between for us to prove him back, he's well worth our time to prove him back.
And that leads into, the next thing we're going to discuss is, I wanted Dr. Cooper to say a few words about the person who will be taking over his responsibilities going forward?
As a result of Mr. Flanagan's resignation, the board just approved the approval, approved the hiring of Ms. Angela Owens to replace Mr. Flanagan at the high school, and we're happy to have her as part of our administrative team moving forward, actually, starting tomorrow. She'll be starting in a transition with Mr. Flanagan as he finishes up through the end of this week. So, Ms. Owens has been a part of the district for 12, 13 years in that neighborhood as a teacher at the elementary level and instructional coach more recently, and we feel that she would be, it's going to be a great complement to the team at the high school, and we are looking forward to working with her.
High school's full of different challenges, so we're looking forward to seeing there. Okay, so we've got old business of 8, no, I'm sorry, 7, 1, and 2. Do I have a motion to approve those? Mr. Scott, do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Leone? And does that, it's the previous minutes, does anybody have any comments on those, before we vote on those? Mr. Scott?
Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2?
Did that, that's you.
You did that, okay. All right. All right, listen to this. All in favor of approving motion Agenda Items 7.1 through 7.2, say aye.
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 Okay, so we're moving on to New Business. Do we have a motion to for 8.1 to 8.7 as amended at the beginning of the meeting? Do I have a second?
Second.
So, before we have any discussion on any of the other items, I would like Mr. Strobel to talk a little bit about the, what he wanted to discuss here in New Business per what was brought up at the Technology Committee meeting earlier today.
At the Technology Meeting, there was great discussion, the last 2 meetings about having enough staff to support the 1-to-1, specifically, not exclusively, but primarily the 1-to-1 initiative for the iPads. Changes in technology as it grows, their level of services to the level where they may be their short staff. So, the idea is to, the plan is, we're going to break forward to the board, just get an RFP for 2 positions, they are level 1 positions, they're not level 2 or 3, for IT staffing. The reason for 2 is, is you've got 2 schools next year, 2 schools for 1-to-1, so you've got 1,100 iPads alone in this building alone, trying to support them.
I have a question, is this technical support or end user support?
It's technical support.
Having any problems with these?
It could be a lost file, could be, you know, something's not working, they are using replacements now, but it's more of a technical side, and then also other things. I can't print through the network for other things we're preparing as well, raise up that level.
One of the things that they brought up at the meeting is that some, with 1-to-1, sometimes it becomes an issue where they really need to have, it's almost like if a kid doesn't have their technology working, it's like they didn't show up with their textbook. And so if it can't be fixed in a very timely fashion, like within that period or the next, it becomes a significant issue for, it really impacts that student. So having better coverage.
In addition to that, the communications would be part of that as well. The person to...
Yeah, communications.
Better communicate all the things that are going on in the district, just the area, the food, you know, there's a lot of really great things happening, so sometimes it's good to be able to communicate those things to the public and whatnot. We recommend the board, for our RFP after that.
So it's RFP for 2 technical positions?
It would be an RFP for tech, the technology, contracting technology services, and also a contracting for communication services.
Okay, so you're saying RFP, this is for contracting support?
And if we did put out an RFP for that, that doesn't necessarily mean that we just want to, we want to see what comes back. So that's what we're voting on. Do we need the wording of that vote?
You can, for an RFP, you can just direct the administration to issue the RFP.
And it's going to be 2 RFPs, so, yeah. Yeah, so I just wanted to know how to word that.
Just to be clear, we're going to require board action on items 1 through 5, 6 is a discussion item, and we're on 7 now. 7 would be motion to direct the district administration to issue requests for proposals for contracted IT staff support as recommended.
That's discussed, okay. Okay.
Did I hear it's 2 RFPs?
They want to do it, they want to do it separate to see what they get back.
But you don't think you can find somebody that has to?
They might, and they might, and somebody would put it through for both, yeah.
This is to investigate.
Right.
This is just to get the RFP out there, to receive a proposal, not to win a contract.
Correct.
All right, so before we have the discussion on number 6, I just wanted to point out that number 3 is for our 3 students who made it to districts for wrestling, so congratulations to them, and good luck to them as well. Oh, did that already happen? That already happened. How'd they do? Do you know? Okay, that already happened. Never mind. And our 4 swimmers, this is our first year that swimming is no longer a club sport, it's been brought in as a high school sport, and we have 4 kids that are going to districts, and that's later this week. So, congratulations to them as well, and good luck to them. And so discussion on RFP for custodial and our maintenance, I think that's Mr. Strobel's show as well. Let's start with you.
Custodial and maintenance?
Yeah.
I'd be really impressed if you had them.
I know, I'm sorry.
Maybe Steve can help me out with that.
Yes, please do. Please help him.
This is just...
This is the discussion on the...
It's on Interstate.
Yes. So you can start.
This is all about the whole Interstate thing, and what we've been doing the whole time?
Correct, this stems from our previous meeting on the conversation we had with the committee, the whole, 2 weeks ago.
Right.
We had it at Facilities, and then brought out the committee, the whole, and wanted to have further conversation with the board on any direction or...
We thought that would be prudent to go out and at least take a look at what's available due to the trouble that we're having right now, having contract fulfillment with Interstate regarding, for a myriad of reasons that have occurred, whether some issue occurs in the board, whether it's skill levels, whatever the case might be, we felt that it would be prudent for us that at least now, at least reach out and see what's available, what our options are.
So we're going to be looking for options if we terminate the contract?
If we decide to terminate, this isn't, this isn't a recommendation to terminate, this is a recommendation for us to get our information, so we have to...
And is part of that discussion separating out custodial and maintenance into 2 RFPs? At least to find out?
To find out what your options are. Best serve the district, because right now, it's not at the level that we prefer it to be.
When was the last time we had a Facilities meeting? That was 2 weeks ago?
Yes.
How have the last 2 weeks been, custodial-wise?
Well, Interstate has an additional person that started last Monday. However, I think the discussion has also been around the fact that for several months, starting with this contract in July, up until this point, the district has been with 50%
Yeah.
Maintenance personnel. So going forward was a good sign to try to, you know, to drop Interstate, you know, to bring more people on, on staff. However, it's difficult to manage at best with what we have, and we're very far behind
Yes.
in a lot of areas, because of the 6 or 7 months of drought in that area.
Are we slightly less behind every week, or are we more behind every week?
The work orders have remained about the same.
Okay.
In a lot of cases, I have not even started entering a lot of preventive maintenance stuff into the work order system. So we're very far behind as far as the district is concerned about getting ahead and being ahead and staying ahead as we need to be.
Okay.
So that has been a continual struggle, and it's going to be a struggle for some time now, until we get ahead of the curve with the people that we have. In addition to that, the hiring process for Interstate has been slow for maintenance and custodial over time. And as you know, we had supervision problems for 3 months where we didn't have a maintenance supervisor at all on site. And we've had continual meetings with Interstate as a whole in order to try to improve this, and it hasn't really gone as I would like to see it. They have made strides in a lot of areas, the maintenance is far behind, custodial was, still has hurdles to cross because there's some personnel departing to go back to landscaping positions starting in March, and there's not enough personnel to fill the gap, and the hiring process is very sluggish. Some of that can be due to the fact of our location here and trying to hire people at a salary to be professional and do the custodial work. Some of that falls on lack of planning on Interstate's part. The district needs are the needs, and we need to think about the students, staff, and builders first.
Yeah.
So it's a regrettable decision that, in my mind, I don't know if our continued relationship is going to improve or not.
I have a question on Snow, was that part of the contract?
No, that was a separate contract.
Okay, I was wondering, is it for Atlantic Snow?
I think it's regrettable, I mean, they are trying to provide the personnel, I'm not going to say they're not, but just, there's a lot of hurdles here left to cross and a ways to go. And I'm not so sure it would benefit the district to try to move on, to be honest.
All right.
This is the starting process, this is intercating along.
Does anybody else have any questions for either Steve or for Mr. Strobel?
Let me ask, yeah, go ahead. What was our, what was our last company?
GCA.
GCA?
Yeah.
How long did we put up with them for me?
3 years.
Okay. I'm just saying, I'm trying to compare apples to apples, it seems like.
Yeah.
Because I know in another district, it took Interstate a while to get their act together, and now they're fine. So I just didn't, I'm just saying.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it took them a while at Springfield, and now we're happy with them, so I just think that sometimes it takes people a while to get where they're supposed to go.
Yeah.
Not just if we wait for 4 years.
No.
One thing we looked at for this contract, was separating maintenance out, if we could do that again.
In my mind, if we're going to bid it, you would need to look at it from both actors,
both sides. Yes.
And I think it behooves the district to do it both ways, to find cost savings and to also provide the best service.
Okay, let me ask, like a housekeeping question for, no pun intended, for the agenda. The way it's phrased in the agenda is that it's going to be a discussion. Would we have to amend that if, to say something else if we were going to vote to possibly put out another RFP? put out another RFP?
Yeah, well, it would be, again, you don't have to take board action to request an RFP.
Right.
But we did it with respect to number seven, we could do the same thing for number six, which would be action to direct the district administration to issue an RFP for custodial and maintenance services, which obviously would be subject to a termination of the existing contract with interstate.
Which we don't have, we wouldn't have to terminate anything, just to put it out there to get bids.
This is to understand where this is.
All right, would the two, yeah, I have.
I just wanted to say one thing, I remember when we did this before, that one of their selling points was they had local districts around here, they could pull people over, and that, I guess that's obviously not working, just keeping them in Springford.
Sorry.
All kidding aside, they were going to pull them in, that was one of their selling points, when the young lady was there, and I just remember that they had a lot of satellites around here. That just was a comment.
Okay.
I know, but I'll.
Who did you have, did, that voted, I'm sorry, who made the motion and the second for that, for this, for number?
8.1 through 6?
8.1 through 8.7, yeah.
I think it's Mr. Strobel had the motion, and Ms. Albright had the second.
Mr. Strobel, would you be?
Not for that.
Okay with changing your motion to that, that language for number six as amended?
Yeah, again, it's, we're looking for two RFPs, or we're looking for both ways. That was the idea, was to gather the information so we have.
Yeah, but Mr. Stro, Mr. Strober said it's so much nicer, so we're going to go with his language.
Yeah, when he says.
Okay, and Ms. Albright, would you be okay to second it as amended? We're not voting yet, I'm just asking if you'd be okay with, that's what we vote on.
Sure, yeah.
It's a friendly amendment, so it's currently before the board is items 8, 1, 8.1 through 8.7 as amended.
If, the other option would be to pull 8.6 out and vote on it separately, if, if board members would be more inclined to do it that way. So let's, let's see if we could amend, amend the current vote to be 8.1 to 8.7, removing 8.6. Would you be okay with that?
Yes.
Would you be okay with that? All right, so let's do that.
So we're going to do 8.1?
Through 8.7, excluding 8.6.
Is there 8.7?
Yes, we added it.
That was added by Mr. Strobel.
Okay, thank you, all right. But then we're going to minus 8.6. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Sky, yes. Ms. Leone?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Uh, yes.
So six yeses.
And do I have a motion to vote on 8.6?
It's a move.
Do we have a second? I will second. Do we, do we have any further discussion on that one before we vote?
Six?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make it for the record, I sat in the meetings for GCA for a year. The link was, it's not clean, we're not serving the students, we're not doing anything we need to do. The discussion was, at the end, we were trying to switch positions, and we put them out for bid, and interstate was the company that we chose. And we were out that meeting, and all the promises tomorrow, and basically just a business thing, it's a contract. I'm going to come in, I'm going to cut your grants. My grants isn't being cut right now, so that's what this is about. It's not about, there's no acts against interstate, nice people, all the above, the job's not getting done. So in July, we were sitting, and I've been in, I've been in facilities the whole time, July, it started off on the wrong foot, for a myriad of different reasons. We're 50% of the staff down, you know, no, no, the owner was there, chest pounding, hey, I got this, this is on my back, and all this, and said, great, take an ownership, I thought that was really good, but it just never happened, it never came to fruition. We're still fighting. And the last meeting we had, we come up and I said, you know, there's some people that are prepared to hire, and you know, we're going to be able to. I don't know where we're at in all that, it's just, again, it's the same thing, so I feel that that's the whole purpose of this, is an axe against interstate, it's all about just making sure that we have the options to take a look at. What are our options to help keep our building clean, so we don't have to go through year five of not having the buildings and having maintenance done?
Oh, turn on your microphone, yeah.
And to have maintenance done, and so that's the purpose of it, just I just wanted you to refer.
Thank you.
And as to why we're doing this, I mean, again, so this is just to gather the information at this point, so we have options.
All right, well, just, just to put my two cents in, I, I was here for much of the previous contract. I know that we had problem after problem. We did, we did try very hard to work through that for three years, and I think we are in a situation, what I, what I hear is that we had, we had a bad relationship for three years, and now we're ready to cut bait after six months. And, and I, and, and that might be, that might be valid, a valid decision, and it might not be, but that's, that's what I hear. However, I am going out and asking for other, other folks to give us, give us their input on what they might be able to do for us, doesn't mean we are ditching our current day to chrome.
We're not there yet, but we also have had, you know, buildings that have not had maintenance done for quite some time, there's a lot of things that are preventing maintenance too.
I hear you.
We can't get the daily things done, how are we ever going to look at maintaining the asset, the buildings, without being able to accomplish this goal?
Yeah, I, like I said, I can, I can see both, both sides, but I also don't think that there's much harm in, in asking for, for bids, because that doesn't mean we're, we're throwing out the baby with the bathwater.
We have to do something to get the problem addressed.
I agree, I agree.
It's a four-year problem.
It's been longer than six.
I know, but, but not, not all of the four-year problem is the fault of the current folks.
We need to get the problem addressed.
It's been longer than July, we signed the contract when, so you have months to prepare for that July timeframe, and July didn't come, and it just hasn't come.
All right, um, do we have any other, any other discussion before we vote on that?
Can I just ask?
Of course.
When's the last time you actually heard from interstate? Like, I mean, what's their?
They're here right now.
Oh, okay, they're here.
Their communication's been very good, we've been meeting with them virtually every week for quite a while. That's one area in which they were way better than MJ.
Yeah. No, it's valid, it's a valid question, you know, it's another data point. If we have no other comments, then we can go ahead and vote on that.
All right, we're going to roll call. Ms. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. B. Sky, yes. Ms. Leone?
Yes.
And Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Six, yes.
Okay. All right, next, um. We're going to do a second. And Deb, do, if we have any, I'm sorry, I vapor locked there for a second, sorry. Do we have any presentations by the public on any issues that we discussed today or otherwise?
Dave Lee, Director of Educational Services with Interstate. Just following up on the stuff that we spoke about two weeks ago, communicated with Rob and Stephen, we have hired an additional custodial supervisor to be in the district at night, going from one to two. We have also gotten ourselves to be fully staffed, yes, we have, we were understaffed, but at this point, we're fully staffed in maintenance, continuing to look for a maintenance supervisor. Once we get a maintenance supervisor, we're going to try to back that into one of the positions we're having issues with. Second part of that is we are full on the custodial as well, and right now, we're dealing with Collins Crew, we've hired some of his crew members to work with us in custodial, he's going to be pulling them within the next month, he's going to be giving us a two-week notice before he pulls anybody, and then we are going to be backfilling custodians into those positions. We have roughly three to four people right now, going through background checks, that it's a matter of two to three weeks in terms of child abuse, fingerprints, any of the other stuff that's needed to be tested for them to start here.
So you're full custodial now?
We're full custodial, with an additional custodial supervisor onboard as well in a year. So those are just a few updates of what we have done since we last spoke in, in terms of trying to get it to where we need it to be. Again, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but again, you know, I'm saying, we, I'm not saying we're not fixing any issues or making more issues, we have inherited some issues from previous companies, you know, we have only been here six, seven months. I understand we have our own issues that we need to solve, but at the same time, in a district this size, it does take a little while to get a footing and understand what actually needs to be done on a day-to-day.
In our meeting, you haven't brought up any of those, that you carried over from the previous ones, rather, if you want to do that now, if you want to present it on email, I don't remember anything you presented, or these sort of five things we carried over, the problems from the previous company.
In terms of?
I don't remember those. I asked you to bring them up now, if you were true, and you had something, I just don't remember them being brought up, but the reason we can't get this done is.
Oh, no, there's no reasons, I'm just saying, there's, I mean, it's well-known that the district wasn't taken care of, hence the reason why interstate is here, and we went in a different direction. So the fact that we all are, all aware that the school wasn't being cleaned and maintained the way it was, we inherited that coming in. We also inherited the fact that, yeah, we were short maintenance, but even Stephen can contest to this, there's no PM program here, things weren't being done before we started here. So, yes, we're playing catch-up, and we're not helping him out with getting things done, but we are still playing catch-up on stuff that was previously done before us.
Thank you for, you know, I have noticed you here at the meetings last couple of months, so I do appreciate you coming to, to hear our, our many, many complaints, and I do, I do appreciate you coming.
I'm just.
That's, that's, that's a lot more than what we got from the, for the previous, the previous group that was, was doing the custodial work, so I do appreciate.
I know it's late, I just, what I'm saying, that we're trying to do, I'm hit and done, we're getting people in here, fully staffed, getting additional managers in here, we are trying to do the right thing in the best.
Yeah, and the, the process of putting something out to bid does not mean, you know, we, we hear, we hear you, but we, you know, the, the fact that we're looking at what, what else might be done by someone else, does, does not mean we're ready to take any action on that, we're just looking, so, thank you very much.
I think we just want to have all of our ducks on the row, because they're gun-shy from what's happened.
Understandable.
It's a risky result.
All right, thank you. Any other presentations by the public? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I do have a second. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.